Good evening and welcome to the Monday, January 27th Board of Education meeting. Tonight is a special meeting in preparation for a vote next Monday by the Board as to the recommended budget to move forward to the Board of Finance. Tonight is one of two nights where we're going to take input, take comments, questions, suggestions from the public. And there are, as you probably have all noticed, there are lots of administrators here, so if there are questions that people have or thoughts, suggestions, we're happy to hear them. The, I do want to start off with an apology. It came to my attention over the weekend that the draft budget was not on our website the way we thought it was going to be last week. It was put up there today. Anybody who wants a copy of it electronically, I'll email them a copy, just send me an email. I will also, though, say that I think only one person was looking for it, frankly, so, but it still should have been out.
And she sent it to a few of us, by the way.
She got it from me earlier today, yeah. So, no, but I do want to, obviously, it's better to have that out early and, yeah, I think that, I talked to a couple of other Board members, and if there are people that didn't get a chance to look at it or consider it ordinarily, next Monday, we don't have public comments, but I think we'd certainly allow any other further questions or comments, given the, putting the budget on the website today, but, you know, any, I do want to-
It's out tomorrow night also.
And tomorrow night, sure, in case people can't, you know, leaf their way through the, through the budget overnight, but want to give everybody any opportunity to look at it, obviously. So, sometimes we start off with brief comments by the superintendent. I think, given that we do have members of the public here tonight, I think I'd just as soon go ahead and turn it over, if that's all right with you, Dr. Freeman. Depending on how much time we have, we may want to revisit some of those issues, and I'm sure your thoughts are going to be offered in response or in response to questions by members of the public.
I'm happy to turn it over to the public and allow them to begin this evening.
Sure, alright, so, please, if you just, when you have comments, just please come up to the podium, give us your name. And I guess you're supposed to do a street address by some rule, but just come on up and, we don't have a time limit, just ask people to be reasonable, and we'll be, we'll be happy to do everything we can do here this evening. So, who would like to start?
I'll just start since I live in Guilford as well, but my name is Amy Bradley. I live at 101 Schoolside Lane, Guilford, Connecticut.
My name is Maureen Shields. I'm a kindergarten teacher at Melissa Jones. Mrs. Bradley is also a kindergarten teacher at Melissa Jones, and Robin Calfine is kindergarten teacher at A.W. Cox. Good evening, Dr. Freeman, Dr. Keane, Mr. Bloss, and members of the Board. We would like to speak to you tonight in support of full-day kindergarten. The expectations for student achievement in kindergarten have increased significantly across all curriculum areas in the last seven to 15 years since we have been teaching kindergarten. This is not the same kindergarten class that any of you or even many of your children experienced. Right now, the kindergarten students are in school for two and three-quarters of an hour every day, half an hour of which is spent in their specials classes, which are P.E., music, and library. This leaves two and a quarter hours remaining for academics. In reality, and because of the nature of four-, five-, and six-year-olds, even the most organized and structured teacher cannot predict nor prepare for the daily interruptions inherent in a kindergarten class. For example, personal hygiene issues, social and behavioral issues, classroom management, et cetera. These would take up approximately 10 to 15 minutes, give or take, every day, leaving two hours and five minutes for academics. Kindergarten students come to us across all academic, social, and developmental levels. Some are already reading and writing, many have a basic understanding of early literacy and math skills, and some simply come to us not knowing letter names, numbers, and some cannot even recognize their name in print. As dedicated and experienced kindergarten teachers, we plan for and teach every day across all of these levels. However, with the time constraints imposed on us by a half-day program, it is becoming increasingly more difficult to meet and address each child's academic needs and build on their individual strengths. Students are now expected to leave kindergarten, reading on a DRA Level III or higher, which is the Developmental Reading Assessment, which entails decoding unknown words, retelling stories, and reading for understanding. They are also learning and practicing how to write sentences using sight words they have learned, letter sounds for unknown words, and basic concepts of print, including spaces, punctuation, and correct letter formation. At present, our students are expected to leave kindergarten knowing the consonant sounds and how to use them to decode print, as well as apply them to their writing. Next year, with the implementation of the Common Core State Standards, the kindergarten students will be expected to also have a mastery of the vowel sounds, which is currently a first-grade skill. With the Common Course, with the Common Core Standards upon us and the increased expectations that come with it, our task as kindergarten teachers is becoming even more difficult. We are being asked to dig deeper without an increase in the time given for us to do that. At present, we are working on implementing a readers' workshop and a writers' workshop model within our classrooms. Both of these models are geared toward a full-day kindergarten program, with teachers able to dedicate a full hour each day for both reading and writing. We together have looked at ways to modify both of these programs so that our students are able to benefit from them. We, as teachers, have experimented with cutting each of these models down to a half-an-hour a day, which creates a very rushed lesson and very little time to dig deeper. We have also tried alternating the days in which we teach reading and writing so that we are able to dedicate an hour to each of these core areas. The difficulty with this is that there is no consistency from day to day, and the children are often flip-flopping back and forth with what they are learning each day, instead of having a clear and predictable routine upon which to build every day. Along with the reading and writers' workshop, which we are striving to work into our days, we are also asking our students to listen and respond to text talks, write about what they are reading, and work with partners to discuss and gain a deeper knowledge of what they are learning. In addition to literacy, we are also teaching math skills on a daily basis, which in kindergarten are often very, are very often learned and practiced in a hands-on approach, with time needed to explore and experiment within a variety of materials and different mathematical concepts. The concept of "teach less, learn more" is very evident in the Common Core Standards for math. All of our students will be asked to understand and demonstrate their proficiency in a variety of mathematical practices, and as such, they will need the time that a full-day program will afford to us. We are extremely proud of the work that we have done over the years with our students and the successes that our students have gone on to achieve as they progress through the Guilford Public Schools. We feel that we have given them a solid foundation in the skills that they need to succeed in school, and we will continue to do our best every day to meet the needs of each and every child. However, with the increased expectations in the implementation of the Common Core State Standards, we feel that a full-day kindergarten program would allow us to better meet the needs of all students, allow time for children to practice and become proficient in all areas, allow more time within the classroom for intervention for struggling students, as well as time for higher students to deepen their understanding. We urge the Board of Ed to seriously consider implementing a full-day program into our kindergarten classrooms in order to afford the students the opportunity to learn and explore in depth across all curriculum areas, so that they have the knowledge and skills, as well as the independence needed, to be fully prepared for first grade and beyond. Dr. Freeman, Dr. Keane, and Mr. Bloss, and all members of the Board, thank you very much for your time and for your consideration that we know you will give to this very important topic. Thank you.
Now, what I'm going to suggest is that, because we do have people here, rather than dialogue about this, which I think we'd like to do, if we can just hear from anybody who wants to comment first, and that way we can kind of maybe focus, frame a little bit about what, what the, my guess is, they're going to think the items are going to fall into two or three or four fairly broad categories, that being one. So, why don't the, or other members of the public who want to comment, why don't we do that now? Go ahead, please.
My name is Michael Pascasilla, and I'm a resident of Guilford, 55 Ocean View Road. About a year and a half ago, my family and I moved to Guilford, and we came from a very good community with a great school system, and that was our biggest concern moving to Guilford, is how is the school system? And I want to start out with a comment, and that is, I have a son at A.W. Cox, and not only has it met our expectation, but it has exceeded our expectation, and I think you should hear that from a, from a parent. Under the leadership of Vince Augustine and his team, and in my social circle, we think they're doing a great job. And I have, I promised my son I would also let everyone know that his teacher, Ann Harford, is doing a great job, so. I did my part. So, I wanted to start, start off by that, but I also want to talk a little bit about full-time kindergarten. So, I'm a local director of health. As a public health professional, like the Board of Education's, we look at outcomes, and education is at the top of the list. And I'm not going to go over the statistics, you folks know what the statistics are, but full-time kindergarten is, it's not a matter of if, it's when. And as a leader of an organization, especially a government organization that is constantly under budget cuts, I know what you're against. I deal with it every day. And one of the things that I do, along with my board of directors, is we look at outcomes and return on investment. And when we look at full-time kindergarten and look at the return on investment, it sits at the top of the list. Overall, while they're, when you look at the data, it does say different things in general. The consensus is that full-time kindergarten does make a difference, and it really is the building block, the foundation of getting the best outcome for our kids. So, with that, just wanted to say my piece, and enjoy living in Guilford. Thank you.
Are we thinking about it, or not sure? Well, why don't we maybe just ask a couple of questions about full-day kindergarten, if we can. I think some of the things that we have been thinking about in respect of all full-day kindergarten is, I think there are three things that we've, we've asked you to focus on. One is cost, second is space availability and/or limitations, and then third is what the last gentleman was referring to, the research. What does the research show? And is the, I think the cost-benefit analysis is actually a quite reasonable way of about this. What does the research show? Are the impacts with respect to the cost?
When the Board met last week, those same questions were asked. I did put together a cost comparison for the Board. I think if I may, Mr. Bloss, I'd like to start in the opposite order and work my way backwards. I would agree that there is information available that speaks to what the teachers suggested, that stretching out the time in kindergarten, giving students more time in their day will give them more time to move slowly through the work that we're asking. It would give teachers more time to go in-depth with the students. I think that as we look at the shifts in instruction that the Common Core is asking us to do, that extending time in kindergarten does only make logical sense. I think if we are being tasked to find really specific performance data in communities similar to Guilford about the benefits of full-day versus half-day, so looking at standardized test scores at third or eighth grade, then the research is less clear. And we were very challenged this year to find very specific statements that our students or students in like communities would perform better at benchmarks of third grade or eighth grade with the difference of full-day and half-day. I will agree with the statement that was made. I do agree that full-day kindergarten is on the horizon. I do agree that the question is a matter of when, not if Guilford will have full-day kindergarten. But having said that, and having matched that to the research question, we then looked at what we saw as a plate of priorities this year, and needed to prioritize what we would put in our administrative recommendation to the Board of Education. I went to a number of PTO meetings this year and listened to parents talk about their need for full-day kindergarten. I engaged in a lot of conversations with administrators and their PTOs about, about full-day kindergarten. But when we then looked at costing out the impact of elements of the new state legislation that was passed last year for which the school district will be responsible this year, when we looked at cost implications associated with the implementation of Common Core State Standards across K through 12, which we must do this year, if not last year, because that is a change that we must respond to, and when I looked at the local priority, in large part highlighted by Futures Report that this Board commissioned a year ago to talk about special education services in the school district, and what I recognize as a need to better service more of our students locally in this district. When we looked at the cost implications of all of those priorities, I chose to remove full-day kindergarten from, from my request to the Board this year. I'm not choosing to step away from my commitment to full-day kindergarten, but it wasn't something that I could find a way to work into this year's budget, meeting what I see not as more important priorities, but as more immediate priorities, and come forward with what I thought was a responsible budget request for this year. So, in this year's budget moving forward, I have spoken to the elementary principals. I have asked them to commit to continuing the research and continuing the planning of full-day kindergarten. We have put monies into this budget to support that research and to support that planning so that at this time next year, or at this time two years from now, we can have a request that will be more fully supported by research. We will have more information, more knowledge of the Common Core and the impact there, and we will be able to come forward with not just a roughed-out request, but a specific schedule showing exactly what that student's day will look like in full-day kindergarten, and how we will implement it and implement it fully and well when we come back with the request. I can assure the Board that I'll be back with a request for full-day kindergarten. I just need to be able to do it in a year where I feel that it is in the right list of priorities, including other pieces that we have on our plate this year.
This, this document that you've just passed out, do we read this to say that the space issue is a solvable, manageable issue?
Yes, at this time, each elementary principal is confident that, given the opportunity, that they could house implementation of full-day kindergarten this year, and in fact, I'd go so far as to say that our four elementary principals would be enthusiastic to support full-day kindergarten. I know that they recognize this as something that will happen, and I know that they are as excited as the staff members that you heard speak about it tonight. Again, it was a matter of trying to balance this. I will note that, as we have talked about growing special education capacity in the district, that we're going to have to continue to watch space carefully. We can absorb it now, after several years of declining K-class sizes. We can absorb it now, and we currently don't house some of the special education programs that I'm also asking this Board to explore in this budget request. So, as we move forward, space will continue to be something we need to watch. If we start watching a rebound in kindergarten class sizes, as some people are projecting we will see as the economy continues to improve, it'll be something that we need to balance carefully as we come forward to this Board. The response that we gave you on this document is a fairly simple response. There could be other solutions that might involve minor, minor capital investments. These changes, in order to absorb this year, require very little construction or room rearranging. I would suggest that if space was becoming more challenging, there are some more creative, possibly more expensive solutions, but at this point, yes, we could absorb K.
Well, remember, do, anybody, anybody else say?
Well, I think for the benefit of the community, the viewers, it's worthwhile to talk about the numbers that are down here. When we met with the district leadership team, some of us requested that we also look at partial implementation of full-day kindergarten, i.e. one section per school to begin with. And Dr. Friedman is telling us that for full implementation for all kindergarten classes in all four elementary schools, it would cost $520,000 roughly, which is about 1% of our budget. But partial, one section per elementary school would cost $150,000, which is a significant difference, obviously, it's less. That would mean that if there's a lot of demand, there would have to be a lottery as to who gets into that. And I think the feeling among the Board is that we agree with the eloquent presentation by the kindergarten teachers and Mr. or Dr. Pastor Houghton. It needs to be done. Can we afford to do it now? Is it right to do it partially? Is it as high a priority as some of the other things that Dr. Friedman is talking about? And that's a big question. And I think the answer in my head is that it has to be done, whether it can be done this year or next year, but it really has to be done.
I would agree with the comment that it's a matter of when, not if. And unfortunately, at this point in time, it's, it is very difficult, given the other constraints that we have, security issues, you know, the site things to take and go that route, lacking the documentation of improvement on the children in our socio-demographic range right here at the moment. If we were in the suburban, in urban environment, then there's a lot more things to point to success of children going into the upper grades with that, and I would be pushing much differently and looking for other opportunities.
The numbers, the $420,000 for the seven new additional teachers, are, does that include, does that include health insurance costs, for example?
Yes, that's a ballpark budget figure that we would do for a year-one teacher plus benefits.
Okay, so that's, that is, you believe, is the total?
Yes.
Alright.
I think it's also fair to say that my, my friends tell me that Madison will be implementing full-day kindergarten next year. As it currently stands, I think we're the only district between New Haven and New London, maybe, that doesn't have full-day kindergarten.
I think we're hearing a lot of, if not a question of if, it's a question of when, and I guess that's always brings up the question, you know, if not now, when?
Yeah.
And why not now? And I guess when I looked at this budget carefully, and the three priorities you outlined at the district leadership team meeting included some of the legislative responsibilities we have in terms of implementing the Common Core and some new evaluations, but then also building local capacity for special needs, I think it's a big priority of this budget. And I guess, maybe you could just comment on where we are with the Futures Report and where we hope to be, you know, relative to other DRGs, and if that's something that, you know, we're looking at maybe getting achievable savings or economies of scale so that we could do this next year, or what our time course is on that? Because we could spend a lot of time and money building local capacity. We've heard that there's a, you know, a time for that return on investment to come in on, on building that local capacity, but when are we talking about being able to do this, do you think, realistically?
Sure. If, if I could address that question in a couple of parts, too. You asked about the Futures Report. A little over a year ago, when I, when I joined the district, November of last year, an outside agency, Futures, had been, had been retained by this Board to do an overall evaluation of our educational programming and services. That report came in towards the very tail end of the budget cycle last year. I think we were just finishing with the budget cycle when that report came in. The report made a number of observations. First, it had a list of commendations for the school district and how we were providing service for our students. It applauded us for our commitment to inclusion. It applauded the efforts of our special education staff, both at the teaching and at the paraprofessional level, and for the support that they offer to their students. It did recognize a number of areas that, that we thought we needed to focus on. One of those areas was a recognition that, when compared to other similar school districts, it appeared that Guilford outplaced more of our students. So, more of our children who required special services, rather than having their needs met here locally, were being, were being placed in outside schools where we were absorbing tuition costs. A recommendation of the report, in fact, to my reading, one of the primary recommendations of the report is that we needed to spend time focusing on building our ability to educate more of our students locally. First, because it's the right thing to do, our commitment is to provide education for all the students of Guilford, and we need to be able to meet the needs of as many of those students as we can. By educating those students at home, we keep them closer to their local neighborhood peers, we educate them in the least restrictive environment, we eliminate things like transportation and travel time from their day because we educate them here close to home. Secondly, if we can develop our local capacity to meet those sorts of needs here locally, we should be able, over time, to recognize some efficiencies. By placing a larger proportion of our students out of district than other similar communities, we're spending more on those special education costs than other similar communities. Last week, when we met, Mr. Ireland asked us if we could take our efforts to build those local programs and project them out into the future. What you see in front of you is, is built on a lot of conjecture. It is difficult to know exactly what our special education population will look like next year, let alone five years from now. We, we cannot control for in-and-out migration, families move into town, families move out of town. Students can be identified having special education needs at any place in their educational continuum. So, what we did was we took our current profile of our special education students today, and we moved that profile out to 2017 and 18, to school year 17 and 18. We filled in behind those students each year with fictional classes of students, and we tried to control for students who are identified in older years along the spectrum. All of those assumptions are listed on the back of your handout, and they're upside down because I did my own copying.
But the assumption-
Way of forfeit.
Yes, it depends on how you turn the page over. The assumptions are listed on the back of the page. What we've identified for you is we've identified four grade levels. We've looked at the elementary grade level, we've looked at the middle grade level, we've looked at the high school grade level, and we've looked at students who are 18 to 21 or beyond 12th grade, all areas where we service our students. We've looked at placements, outplacements in three different broad areas, areas that were identified in the Futures Report. And then we've highlighted for you in red the efforts that we've been discussing in part in this, in last year's budget proposal, but in part in this year's budget proposal to build that local capacity. Specifically, we're looking at the Bright Connections Program, a district-wide program that we initiated at Lakes this year, I would say to great success. We had anticipated that program needing to expand into our middle level as the students who are currently being serviced their age. We have then identified an alternative high school program that we've discussed in some of our earlier meetings, and then we've identified a Strive program. This is an 18 to 21 transition program that we are in fact building in collaboration with Clinton and Madison. Looking at the projections, and if you look as you go across the years, and as we build the populations in those specialized in-house programs, we project a significant decline in our outplacements. Because if we can meet the needs of those students here locally, we will not have the need to place those students out. And you can see that from our, our planned outplacements of four to six students district-wide next year, we're projecting a significant decline over the next several years. It stems from the information that came to us in the Futures Report. I think that it is a logical, a logical recommendation. I think it starts from a place of better meeting the needs of all of our students, but I think it speaks to a more efficient system as well. And so, this was the information that, that Mr. Ireland had requested last week, and I appreciate the request because I think it helps us to see, to see the suggestions that we're making. I will note that Mrs. Virginia Brown joins our staff next week, and these are some of the, the activities that she has engaged in in Stonington. Stonington built an 18- to 21-year-old program similar to the Strive program that we have started work on this year, and they've been able to see that they've met the needs of students in that age bracket at home and not had to place, have to place those students out. And so, I think it's a, it's a healthy direction to move in. We recognize that it is a significant priority in this year's budget, but when we requested the Futures study- the futures study, we knew that we needed to look and we needed to make a significant investment to move in the right direction.
Now, you know, I guess I should just mention that one of the reasons that we're spending a lot of time talking about this is, first of all, programmatically, that we think it's the wisest thing to do programmatically, to educate as many children as we can in district. But the other side of that coin is that the outplacement payments that we make to these private facilities, mostly private facilities, it is the third largest item in our budget, behind salaries, teacher salaries, and behind medical, health insurance. So, right, benefits. So it is a very substantial number. I think that it's a net of, not counting, or taking the state grant, the state gives us some money back over a certain amount of expense, and the net that we pay anticipated in your budget for next year is a little over $3 million. So that's the volume that we're talking about. And so that if you were able to, obviously, there's going to be some costs to do that in-house, you're not just going to say, oh gee.
Absolutely.
It's not going to be a dollar-for-dollar trade-off with the increasing capacity at no cost, and that obviously doesn't work. But there has to be an alternative. We can't just say, well, we're spending a lot of money on outplacements, and so stop. That's just not, that's not a menu item. This is all done through IEPs and all through and subject to the mediation process and subject to ultimately to litigation under the federal statute. But it is, I think we've, you've been very responsive, I think, to our requests to really spend some time on this and to try to build some capacity, not only for budget-related reasons, but for programmatic reasons. And I think that's, that's kind of why we're spending so much time on that.
If I could just make a comment, I actually happen to have one of the five children in Bright Connections, and I wasn't going to speak, I was just going to listen. I'm Lori LaTerra, 133 River View Drive. I happen to have a child in Bright Connections, and I cannot speak more highly about the quality it has changed in my child's life. And while I can't predict the future, I can tell you, she's getting things today in this program where it's dedicated to the types of individual needs that she needs, that it had nothing to do with the teachers. She's always had great teachers in Guilford, but you can't teach that way in a classroom and be fair to all the students in the classroom. She not only is getting the education she needs right now, but she's getting to participate with her own peers, which is developing her esteem, her confidence, her ability to interact while giving her the academics that she needs. So if it's just one child that doesn't have to get outplaced, and I'm telling you that I probably, two or three years down the road, probably would have had to face that battle with the school, that savings in and of itself. So I can't give you actuals that it happened, but I can tell you that there's a dramatic difference in my child. And if I talk to the, excuse me, BCBA who worked with her last year, her comment to me, probably a month and a half in, was I cannot believe the difference and that this is the same child that I saw last year as I see this year. And it's mainly because of the one-on-one interaction that's built her confidence and her ability to try. And that being said, I still also support full year kindergarten because I think that would have been helpful for her. She was fortunate to go a full year, but I do think that that's critical, too. But I do think that the program they're putting together here and its continuation is critical to Guilford in the long term from a financial standpoint.
You know, maybe you just, not necessarily for you specifically, but for just hearing what people talk about, we assume that parents would rather have their children educated in district, assuming that the level of services is comparable. And there's some great programs out at district, obviously, that some of the programs that children go to are very specialized and they do a great job. But our assumption is that people would rather have their children educated in district, assuming the services are comparable. Is that?
Yeah, there's a number of reasons. Number one, busing a child and adding more to their day, especially a special needs child, is just dramatically draining. Forget the fact that it would be for any child to have to go on a bus for a long period of time. The other half of it is, when I do look and I had looked, at a side of a young child, so I looked into other programs, they don't have that social aspect. So my child gets to participate in music and in art and in gym and in recess with all her peers. And that's a critical part of inclusion and acceptance over time. Everybody has their own challenges, whether it's a special needs child or a child whose family has suffered something or something happens to them long-term. It's that acceptance and understanding of who this child is. My child would not get that out of district. She wouldn't be having and building friendships that, by going to a school that could hit her academically, at the end of the day, as a life skill, you have to be able to fit into your community. And that's something she gets by being kept here that she wouldn't get outside of district. And I think that if you talk to most special needs parents, they would probably voice that same concern.
You know, there's another one of those same lines, and we rarely look at it this way, but there's a real benefit to the non-special needs student, to have special needs students in this district. There's nothing more educational and exciting than to have a friend who has special needs. And I will never forget many graduations from Guilford High School when a child with obvious special needs gets his diploma, and the rest of the students stand up because they know him and they love him. So that benefit, which we can't quantify, I mean, we can't put a dollar value on that, but that's very, very important for the non-special. You've talked to the benefits for your child, which are paramount, but I also want to point out the other kids' real benefit from that.
And I will say, I've been seeing it in both schools that she was in, at the youngest age level coming in, kids accept that because it's all they know. And if that can be fostered as they go older and out having that, I think that's something we should encourage as a community and not discourage as a community. So again, not a question, but a comment, although I'd love to see the other things you're building into the budget. And at the same time, I do support full day kindergarten because I do see the difference. I saw the way her friends struggled in trying to build everything into just two hours and what was being pushed upon them as well. So it's just a couple comments.
To bring this back around, the people in the audience, I remember sitting in the audience and not having all the papers that we could appear, but just to summarize, what we're seeing here is that there's, understanding there's a lot of conjecture, is the possibility of declines in out placements in the 2014-15 year. And, you know, honestly, when I looked at this budget, when I first opened up this budget book, you know, I would highlight the fact that, you know, while tuition is a third, you know, dollar item, as far as the percentage increase, you know, it's well over half a million dollars, and that's not even including the state portion that they would pay for that, that we're counting on, which is well over what full day kindergarten might cost. And then, within the budget, we look at what we're asking for, and it happens to be a lot of special needs things, which struck me as, you know, you've got a futures report that's saying we're spending too much, you've got tuition and costs increasing, we're asking for more capacity, but, you know, what I hear is that we need to build that capacity to bring it down. But my question, I guess, is, you know, if next year, at this time, we're sitting here and we're thinking, well, we still have this many out placements, but we're hoping that next year we don't, at what point can we sort of take that leap and say, you know, we really think it's going to come down? I mean, do you think that's going to be next year or is it two years away? I mean, if we're looking at the budget of, you know, 2014-15 and a year from now, you can project that it's going to go down, but is that, at what point do you think you're comfortable? Do you have to actually see it come down before you're willing to put in the money, you know, in other places? I mean, assuming that.
You know, when we budget for this line item, when we budget for tuition, we actually look at real students and their current planned placements for the following year and budget on those real placements, and we build in very little capacity to absorb additional unplanned out placements. So my immediate response would be that I do expect that the line would either begin to dramatically slow in its rate of increase or decline in the next year or two. It will be gradual, and then you will see a sharper drop-off as we begin to develop really practiced strong programs. Before we can suggest to a parent that their child isn't going to be placed in an outside school that will meet that child's needs, we have to have the appropriate setting here in district. So I think, yes, I think with the fact that we have Bright Connections in place and doing well this year, I think with the plan to launch an alternative high school program and the STRIVE 18 to 21-year-old program this coming September, that we are budgeting for expected out placements in the requested 13-14 budget, I expect that by the time we're requesting the 14-15 budget, we should be able to, and I'm saying that very carefully, either dramatically slow the rate of increase because the cost of the placements are going up every year as well. It's not just that we have more students who need those services, but it's that the costs of those services are going up. We should either be able in the first year to see a dramatic slowing in the rate of increase or leveling, and very soon thereafter, I'm going to suggest that you will see a real reduction in the tuition line moving forward. Reduction is a relative term. That line isn't going to drop in half, but it's going to become a smaller portion of the budget as we move forward fiscal year to fiscal year.
And then transportation, as Lori indicated, is tied to that as well.
Absolutely.
And that's a quality of life issue for the students as well as the fuel and the energy that's put into moving kids.
It would be better to bring those students to school on their local neighborhood school bus, both from an efficiency point of view and from a social quality of life point of view. Absolutely.
Other, anybody else wanting, please?
Quick question, Dr. Freeman. Do you think there's any reason to think there might be a significant drop-off in the number of? Brian Lyle, 69 Davis Drive. DSM-5 is basically, from what I understand, doing away with Asperger's and expanding the autistic spectrum in simple terms. Based on the makeup of our special needs population, do you think that might have any impact on numbers? Understanding that every case is different and we really don't know, I'm also thinking it might not affect the kids who are outplaced, the number of kids who are outplaced as much because they're two different parts of the spectrum.
Yeah, you know, I think that might only change the way that students have been identified or categorized, but our students, whether we identify them as having Asperger's needs this year or having needs on the autistic spectrum a year or two years from now, we're still going to need to meet their, we're still going to need to meet their instructional needs. So we may be applying a different label, applying a different classification, but we're still talking about students' ability to be successful in a classroom, and the child who's going to come to us next year is going to have the same set of needs, whether or not the DSM-5 has been revised and edited or not. So I don't think we're going to see an immediate change in identification rates as a result of that. I think it may be more instructive to us in how we assess and how we identify students and how we build programming for them, but I think we're still going to need to build programming for them in one way or another. I don't think we'll see a change in identification rate, certainly not quickly. I'd also point out, and I should have started my answer with that, that's conjecture, that's broad speculation, because nobody knows exactly what to expect moving forward once those changes are made.
However, having an in-house program gives us flexibility and gives us the ability to address the needs of, as things change going forward. You know, if we have a program that's, and again, this is about investment, if we have a program that's also too small, that could also hinder us as well. We need to have an appropriately sized program that handles, you know, what we can handle in district and gives us the ability to be flexible and to optimize in terms of some of those costs.
Nimble is a word that is often being applied to organizations and current organizational and systems thinking, and you're right, if we own a program in-house, then we have the ability to be flexible and responsive and, in fact, nimble. So as populations of students may look different from year to year for any number of reasons, we can adjust our programming, we can adjust to meet those needs. If we're going outside, we've got much less ability to make those fine adjustments and meet the needs of the kids that we have coming through our system.
And taking a look at this completely speculative set of numbers, it does show, you know, it's going to take a little bit of time, but over that time, I mean, you're talking about bringing approximately 30 students in-house, and with 30 students in-house between transportation and the cost of outplacement, that gives us a significant budget to work with in order to provide those types of services. And I'm not going to quote any numbers because I have no idea, but I will also tell you that there's the excess cost.
Yes, the excess cost grant.
The excess cost grants, which is paying for some of this, and we actually don't see that getting more favorable, so therefore, these costs could go up even quicker than the expectations are. Even though the outplacements do not increase their prices very much each year, that doesn't mean our cost to us isn't going to go up a lot more because of the reduction of the excess cost.
Right. It's also worth noting that even if we project having 30 students in those programs, not all of those students would have been outplacements. Some of those students are just students who are going to get better service because we're going to be able to be a little more specialized than what we do for those students. But many or some of those students would have been outplacements, and we would have avoided that, both for them, for their quality of life, and for the efficiency that it generates.
Speaking of non-binding predictions, we've invited Senator Meyer and Representative Whitlitz and Representative Candelora to our next meeting to talk about what's happening in the legislature with respect to education, and I think probably the funding issue is going to be, it's going to be a question. They will give us their best estimate.
That'll be for the second Monday of February, our first regular, that'll be after the governor's percentage is budget, so that'll be another interesting view of what the big picture connect is.
No, I mean, look, you're right, there's, anybody who thinks that the excess cost grant is going up from now is really not, is just draining, it's not going up, not our reimbursement. I think we're generally happy that it is where it is, frankly, although it hasn't been cut in the prior budgets by the governor, but it's just, it's not going up. And so that is a cost that the outplacements is just going to become a greater cost to districts that don't pay attention and try to do some of this in-house.
So I guess, you know, to me, anyway, when it comes to investment, we have different opportunities to invest, one of them obviously been all-day kindergarten, another one being this issue associated with special needs. Today, a more prudent investment to me is to go towards the, more towards special needs because I think it gives us a better return on a current, today's level, whereas long-term, I do think that it'll give us some flexibility. I think all-day kindergarten is definitely something that will happen. So, but I think when it comes to investments, I think this is one we can make this year.
I think if you're teaching kindergarten right now, that's a tough thing to say. However, I just want you to know that we really appreciate you coming. All of us have read, or should have read, a book about the implementation of the Common Core, and I was just blown away by some of the requirements for kindergarten that are coming down the pike. And I understand that the pressures that are on your kindergarten teachers to try to get all of that in to these little kids in two and a half hours. And I think we all understand that it's not just, it's just imperative that we do full-day kindergarten sooner rather than later. I hope you're understanding that we have some difficult choices to make. Money, when you're making decisions about how to spend money, taxpayers' money, it's always a difficult decision, and there are pressures in lots of different areas from where we can spend the money. And we are trying to make the best decision that we can at this time. I know it doesn't help you to understand why there's no full-day kindergarten in this budget, and I certainly think that we all understand the importance of full-day kindergarten, not as much as you do because you see it, deal with it every day. We try, we're just trying to make the best decision for the most kids that we can and for the bottom dog. I hope you'll understand, but we do appreciate you really coming and presenting this to us.
Andrew, we appreciate you listening and considering.
On this topic, I would like to just ask one more question. So the, and this has come up before, the idea of possibly, at some point, considering one section per elementary school versus full implementation. I mean, is that something I think that's a reasonable consideration? I see that as fairly problematic, and I can't imagine, I mean, I think if we were to do this, I would far prefer full implementation than considering that, but I see it here still as presented, at least from a financial standpoint, as an option. still as presented, at least from a financial standpoint, as an option?
Sure. It was presented in that handout in response to a specific question. So I didn't present that as an option that I'm proposing in this budget, although I will say that it is an option that I entertained and that I in fact pursued at some time and stepped away from as an option for this budget. So the two-column comparison that I provided to the board tonight was in response to a direct question from the last meeting, and I wanted to provide that because I was asked. I agree. It's an option, but I would rather, and quite honestly, in response to the eloquent comments and the response I'm hearing from the board, I would rather work hard and present a full proposal one year from now than look at a three- or four-year slow rollout of growing one class per neighborhood school. And I would, I would suggest it's a better implementation to come forward with full implementation 12 months or 24 months from now and not do the pilot. Although I looked hard at the pilot and engaged in a lot of conversation with our elementary principals about the idea, there are some positive aspects to that. Growing a program from small to large is in fact what we're suggesting with some of these in-house special education programs. But in this particular case, I think with the numbers of students we're talking about, with the discrepancies that we already have with student readiness as they come into first grade, I'd rather see full implementation in one year than that phased approach.
I would, less informed on educational on that subject, I would wholeheartedly back that. I guess I, my only comment is that I, I'm a little bit concerned and just about the timing. I mean, I think maybe I'm piggybacking on what Chris said earlier. I just, I think this set of numbers is helpful. I just, I get a little bit concerned that we're going to come to next year, and we've started these great programs, and we need to put more money to keep them going, and we've got to put full-day kindergarten up for one more year. And I think that's, I think we're going to get a lot more people understandably here if that happens again. So I, I know all of this kind of stuff is projections, and these are projections, the sheet you handed out, which are numbers about hopeful dropment, hopeful drops in outplacements. If we could also, if there's a way to think about kind of projected costs for the, not this coming budget cycle, but the following budget cycle in either continue, I mean, this would require expansion of Bright Connections and expansion of some of this stuff. And what do we think those costs might look like? Because I think if we're going to come around again and consider full-day kindergarten, we're going to have to understand that we are going to be looking at increased costs to grow this program at a time when we're not yet expecting much in the way of savings and tuition.
I think this document allows us to start putting the, I can put that detail to this document, so we can begin looking at those projected enrollments, identifying what that would mean in terms of staffing and support and root and space, and we can continue to work on this framework and give you those further numbers. I would agree that I share your concern. It is a broad projection, and while it helps to look forward this year, budgeting does ultimately come down to making the best decision for the circumstances and the priorities that present themselves year to year. You don't want to just be thinking annually, but every year, the reality changes, and you're trying to always project forward and respond to the moment. But I agree with you, and as soon as I started to look at this, I started thinking about the next levels of detail that we can bring to this. And I apologize, I don't have those for tonight, and I want to point out that I won't be able to have those for tomorrow evening either, although we will be able to continue working on this document.
And convening needs also, or going to be space between those two programs, that they both will require additional square footage, and how are we able to take and handle that? And what alternative space usage do we have going on in buildings now that we take for granted that will have to be paired in a different type of way? And as, you know, Amy Marie said before, the balance of the program here, we're looking at 1/13th of our kids that you're talking about, you know, a little under 8% of the average population of the kindergarten class affecting them for their years going ahead. So don't take that lightly, but it also is offset upon the other needs of the total population that we try to balance off the total budget.
I recall an amount in the budget was being utilized to continue the study through next year and all-day kindergarten, too.
Yes, we did set aside monies in this request to continue the planning and the preparation for all-day kindergarten. We are not abandoning it. And I'll go back to something I said earlier. I'm not dropping my commitment to full-day kindergarten. I think it is something that we need to continue to pursue. I just didn't feel that it was something that I could fit into this proposal this year, but we will continue working on it.
Where is that money? How are we spending it to look at contracted services?
It's in contracted services. It's money to support a group that will continue to develop schedules, to collect the research, and to make a fuller proposal next year.
Be like overtime for people.
Yes. And I know of at least four volunteers in the room tonight who are willing to work.
One of the things I just want to mention, I sort of feel compelled to say this, that, you know, it's exciting that we're talking about program as part of a budget instead of just trying to figure out how to deal with our health insurance costs and deal with some of the other things that, you know, we have, the health insurance, we've got it, it's under control at the moment, I guess.
This is a luxury.
Yeah, you know, the, it wasn't that long ago, two years ago, right, that we were a million dollars in the red?
Three years ago.
Three years ago, yeah. And now the proposed increase, just so, just, I'm just going to say it in the broadest numbers, the budget is a little over $50 million. So whenever we talk about a half a million dollar increase, it's about a percent in our budget. The increase in health benefits, health costs this year is $100, $150,000, something like that.
A hundred percent.
Yeah, and that's, there have been years that it was 8%, 10%, you know, and then we still wound up in the red at the end of the year. So it's, where Dr. Freeman is right now, just so everybody knows, is his recommended budget has an increase of 3.39%. Statistically speaking, it's unlikely that every single one of those dollars will actually be approved by the Board of Ed, nothing personal, you understand?
It's not a little first.
Yeah, we try to balance, you know, we have to make a judgment, too, right? What will the community support? We do have a referendum form of budget government, and we've been, we've had very good relations with the community and very good support. I think the amount that our budgets have passed recently has been unprecedented really in the community's history, and I think that's a reflection of both that we've tried to be responsible, but also that the results are there. You know, that the, when you compare the per capita tax burden in Guilford with other towns and what the results are, we're, I think, I think we stack up pretty favorably with almost, just about anybody. Yeah, and so, you know, that's the struggle, you know, is if he's at 3.39 right now, and let's just say hypothetically, a couple of things were subtracted out of it, would the community support a 4% budget increase if it included all-day kindergarten? Or would the community not support that? Would the community support something, something lower, depending on what the, depending on what the program is? So, I mean, we don't, we don't know, obviously. We don't, we're going to, we have to try to do our best to form some consensus around that, but recognizing ultimately it's the community's decision. You know, what we do as a district is really, is really, the community has ownership of, and the town, the town has been very reasonable and reasoned about what to do with our budgets. And so, I mean, we have some stewardship obligation, obviously, to act accordingly and to present responsible budgets to the town, but ultimately it is the town's, the town's decision. Do you have any question, comment?
Yeah.
He's going to make it.
Don't watch it.
Acknowledge, you don't want to.
I was really, really was just going to listen, but my name's Jamie Clonton. I'm at 444 Norton Town Roading here in town. I appreciate the position that everybody's in. I work in special ed and one of those programs that some of these kids from Guilford come to. I'm also a mother of, a pair of soon-to-be kindergarteners next year. And so this, this budget is kind of close to me. I have to admit, I haven't looked through it. I just found it online like right before we came here, so I haven't had a chance to really see. I just, sitting here tonight and listening and just thinking, one of my questions goes back to something we had said earlier about data supporting the, you know, the need for full-day kindergarten, and we just don't, we haven't seen it based on test scores in third and eighth grade. My question to that would be, well, the Common Core is brand spanking new. There is not a third grader or an eighth grader that has tested this. And what a shame that's going to be if we have to wait until these current kindergarteners or, in my case, next year, my two, you know, get to third or eighth grade to find out we are a little bit behind the eight ball, and that would be a shame. I'd hate to see that happen. You know, and I know $520,000 sounds like a lot, but like you just said, and it is 1%, and whether or not the community would, you know, appreciate it. I mean, I looked at the numbers really briefly. I mean, kindergarten enrollment, roughly 225 kids. I mean, I wonder how many more kids there would be, parents like myself who are paying a tuition at parochial school or somewhere else that have their kids that, you know, have to go to kindergarten. I mean, it's just, you know, how it is, and how many of them would appreciate in-town services, you know, full-day. Some of us are dual-working, full-time, you know, workers and parents and need this more than anything. And that's, I know it's an old, everybody has been there, you know, but I'm just, I'm thinking more, everybody's been there, but now we're at this point where we have this curriculum. I mean, I've seen it. I almost choked when I saw what has to be expected of these kids, and I don't want my kids to be behind because of a 1% increase. And I just wonder, and again, not looking to lose my job and what I do with special ed, because obviously, you know, the students that come from this town help keep me employed, but if there's any way within the budget to just work, you know, some of this and some of this to make it work, I mean, that's ideally would be awesome. I would have to say, too, the one kindergarten program would be in one school building just to save money would be very tough. I mean, in a lottery case, somebody like me with twins, you know, what do you do when one gets it and one doesn't? I lived that in the mag, did the magnet school lottery down in New Haven, and I was, you know, obviously unsuccessful with that. So, you know, here we are. And I just think in this economy, for those of us all struggling, for towns struggling to make budgets, for parents struggling to, you know, make ends meet, for everybody, you know, it's tough, paying those tuitions and times two is not easy. And wouldn't it be, it wouldn't be nice that it comes out of our tax dollars? I'm not saying that, but it's, you know, what we do as a community. I moved to this town a few years ago because I loved what this town stood for. I grew up nearby, you know, and I never in a million years thought I'd be in the position where I'm at today going, gee, everybody around us has this really great thing going on by deciding that our young kids are that important and they need this, and then we're going to be the ones that, that aren't, or we're going to be the ones that say, well, maybe in another year, and we don't really know what the numbers will look like. I don't know, I'm just, it's a little disheartening to me, but I'm sorry, this isn't very eloquent, but just kind of talking off of what I've heard tonight, and I hope I've pled my case, and maybe there'll be more parents like me here tomorrow night to say the same thing because it's important. Our little ones are important. And not that anybody else is not important, but it would be really nice to find a way to get a little bit of both and work as the years go on to getting more and more of what we need with our special ed kids. I know that some of the kids we have in my program, the least restrictive environment for them is going to be, right now it is where they are. I mean, I wonder what it would cost our town to put into place what some of our kids that I know I see would need, you know, and to sacrifice for the, you know, 225 kindergarteners. It's just, it's just tough to swallow. So anyway, I thank you for hearing me and have a good evening.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Hold on one second.